Okay, I need a motion to come back into our council meeting.
Mayor Protem will make a motion to reconvene as a council.
Motion by Councilmember Williams, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamone, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in session here. We have two more public hearings before us. Our next one is a public hearing to consider an ordinance 2025-11 for a code text amendment to amend sections Title VIII, Utilities, Chapter One, Waterworks System, Section 5E, Billings, Delinquency, and 8-4A-13 Sewer Systems Annual Statement, Service Charge, Penalties. Our attorney Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mayor Protem and Council. This is basically a housekeeping item. Our municipal code in the Utilities Chapter, which is Title VIII, in the Waterworks System and in the Sewer Systems subsections, we delineated the late fee as being $10 in our code. We have since adjusted that with our fee schedule, which we adopted by resolution with the budget, to be more than $10. And so I'm proposing that the code be amended to take out the specific reference to the $10 and simply say that it will be set by resolution with the fee schedule.
Great. Do we have any questions, Council?
Nope.
All right, if that's all, we'll open our public hearing. If there's any would like to come forward and speak to this public hearing, please come forward. Okay, we'll close our public hearing, bring it back up here to the Council. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
These are-
Oh, do you have a, Tina, do you have a?
I don't have anything for them.
These code text amendments on these type of things are fairly simple and easy. So I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-011 for the code text amendment to amend section Title VIII, Utilities, Chapter One, Waterworks Systems, Section 5E, Billings, Delinquency, and 8-4A-13 Sewer Systems Annual Statement, Service Charge, Penalties, et cetera. I guess that's it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rogers. This is a roll call, so we'll go down the line. We're gonna start with Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
I'll do myself. Councilmember Jensen, yes. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
All right, it passes. Thank you. Do you have the next one, too?
Yes.
So we have, our next public hearing is to consider an ordinance 2025-12 enacting compensation increases for civic statutory and appointed officers of Pleasant Grove City reflecting annual COLA and merit increases providing for an effective date.
Mayor Protem and Council, the state statute requires that all statutory officers and appointed officers, in the interest of transparency and openness, have their compensation adopted by ordinance. Recently, as last year, instead of, which also requires a public hearing, last year the state legislature added a different, or added an additional requirement that anytime any of the compensation is adjusted, we have to hold a public hearing and adopt those increases by ordinance. What is in front of you today is simply reflecting not to exceed on Exhibit A, the statutory and appointed officers are simply being proposed to receive the same increase that all full-time employees are, have been adopted in the budget. The merit increase is 2.35 percent, the COLA increase is 2.7 percent, and the proposed total increase in each of those statutory officers' positions is no greater than 5.05 percent. And again, these, this is not increasing anybody's salary over and above what the normal employees are getting, full-time employees are getting with the new budget.
Correct. Any questions, Council? All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing to the public. If you have any questions, please come forward. Okay, see, none? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back up to the Council, and I'll entertain a motion if any.
Yes, Mayor Protem, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-012 enacting compensation increases for specific statutory and appointed officers of Pleasant Grove City reflecting annual COLA and merit increases and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. This is a roll call. We'll start with Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen, yes. Councilmember Lamone?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Tina, it's so good to see you up here instead of Neil, right?
No, it's usually the Neil Show. Today is the Tina Show.
Anyway, we have before us to consider approval for a request for off-premise beer retailer license for, is it Alami Tobacco, doing business as Lake Smoke and Vape located at 881 West State Street, Suite 160, Pleasant Grove, Utah.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. We have received a request from the Alami Tobacco Store, doing business as the Lake Smoke and Vape Shop here in Pleasant Grove. They are located in the Macy's Shopping Center facing south, next to the Supercuts. Great Clips, sorry.
By the UPS, by the UPS store, then?
By the UPS store. They are an existing business who have been operating the smoke shop for several years, and they have requested from the Department of Alcohol at the state the permission to sell off-premise beer and to be granted a license as an off-premise beer retailer. The state requires local consent as part of the criteria for considering the application, and so he has submitted this to Pleasant Grove City for your consent for him to apply for the off-premise beer retailer state license. I have spoken directly with the DABC representatives and have had Planning Commission look at the distance requirements, and it appears that the application meets current code requirements for distance between, away from community centers, and there is no restriction on the state level for selling beer and smoke shop products in the same place.
So this is off-premise, so that means it's sealed, it's not fountain, it's not-
Right.
And they would just, they would, they would sell it and take it?
Yeah, it would be similar to, you know, going into any of the convenience stores that have off-premise beer licenses in the manner in which it would be sold. There would be no consumption on-premise allowed. They would have to leave the premises. And then there are also some requirements in the state code with regard to display and advertising that are a little bit detailed, but basically they have to separate the coolers that would sell alcohol from other drinks that they would be selling.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Is the applicant here by any chance?
Uh...
Okay.
I spoke with him on the phone and told him that we would be considering it today and invited him here, but told him it wasn't required, so I didn't know if he came or not.
Great. Any other questions?
And this is, this is a new product for him, not a-
Yes, it's a new product.
It looks like, yeah.
He did mention to me on the phone that he has other stores in Salt Lake County and that he does have off-premise beer licenses on those establishments, but this is the first one he's applied for in Utah County.
Okay.
Okay, if any no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I'll, I will make a motion to approve a request for an off-premise beer retail license for Alami Tobacco, a DBA doing business as the Lake Smoke and Vape located at 881 West State Street, Suite 160.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lamone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes. Sorry, Scott, I'm a slow writer here.
No, you're good.
All right. We have next, Consider Resolution 2025-26, how the Pleasant Grove City Council authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with the Lockhart Group. Scott?
Thank you. Just a little background, last November there was a vote taken to split the current Alpine School District into three different districts. The district that our city will be in, which is in essence being referred to as the Tempanoga School District, which would include the cities of Orem, Vineyard, Linden, and Pleasant Grove. Shortly after that, we created an interlocal agreement where the four cities would work together in the benefit of the transition to help the new school board be ready to be able to do business when they are elected. The new school board is up for election in November, and they will be, you know, taken over as soon as they are elected. In the meantime, there is some current legislation that is concerning to our four cities, particularly for the financial aspects of, of the new school district. We are recommending that the four city, we're recommending to you as part of this agreement, that as the four cities, we hire a lobbyist to be able to help us work on that legislation that would be able to be more beneficial to the new school district. So we'll be operating under the authorities of the interlocal agreement, which we have created, but what this would do would be to give myself, the city administrator, the ability to sign a contract with the Lockhart Group when that time comes. So there are five things in here, just want for you to know why we would hire this person, this lobbyist. Number one is to provide professional consulting and advice to the Tempanoga School District on issues related to the school split. Number two, to serve as the Tempanoga School District's primary representative and liaison to communicate and work cooperatively with the other two new school districts on issues related to the school split. Three, to assist the Tempanoga School District in identifying and procuring additional state and federal appropriations for the improvement of schools within the new district. Number four, to work collaboratively with the other two new school districts and state legislators to make improvements in the law governing school district splits as needed. And number five, to provide such other consulting services to the Tempanoga School District as the Reorganization Committee deems appropriate. This person will be working for the interlocal, so working for the four cities. Even after the new school board is elected, they will still be receiving direction under us.
Maybe state why?
Yeah, then the, according to law, the new school district is not allowed, well, no school districts are allowed to hire lobbyists in order to further their legislative needs. As a city, we are allowed to do that. And the reason why the city would engage and be a party to this, and I don't have a number for you, but it is to the tune of millions of dollars that could be affected by this legislation. So if we are successful in, in having this lobbyist help us either amend current legislation or write new legislation to be able to help out the new Tempanoga School District. Now, this lobbyist, we're talking in the neighborhood of our contribution as a city of probably just over $20,000 to be a part of this. The reason why the city, our recommendation and the reason why we would think that this is a good idea is the taxpayers of Pleasant Grove are also the taxpayers to the, gonna be the taxpayers to this new school district. So even though the city itself would not directly benefit from doing this, the residents of Pleasant Grove, who you were stewards of, would be financially impacted for the positive if we can get some legislative changes. So that's what we're proposing.
Scott, just a question. How, and I've never thought about this before, but how long is the interlocal agreement that was thrust upon us by the other residents to our north and to our west? How long does that, how long does that stay in, you know, in force?
I don't recall expiration on it.
No.
Probably until-
So it can go, it can go in, in parallel with our new school district?
Our, my recommendation would be that we keep it intact.
Yeah.
Probably until, well, until it doesn't make sense.
Well, the, the reason why I'm asking the question, obviously, is if we're gonna, if we're gonna invest in, in the ability to represent, have, have the Lockhart Group represent our residents and our citizens, I would prefer this more than just a year because, you know, it's, these kind of things are very beneficial, and I would, and I shouldn't want it to end if, if we were gonna be stuck.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great point. This is for one year.
Right.
And so when we reach the end of year one, if we have things where we need to be through the legislature in the 2026 session, we're probably done. If there are still work to do for the 2027 session, the new school district is not officially formed till July 1 of 2027.
Right.
So there's still two legislative sessions before that. If it would make sense for us as a city to reengage through the interlocal after a year, then that's something we would bring back to you.
And we would have quote-unquote a 25% vested say in that, that discussion and/or decision, correct?
Yeah, well, that's what's being proposed right now. I mean, this is kind of case by case. The interlocal doesn't specifically say this is how you have to split the vote between the four cities, or this is how you split the money.
But with our conversations we've had-
This is, sorry, let me, let me take a step back.
But that's, that's the point, right? I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna split the fee and then be left with 10% of the vote.
Yeah, so, so let me take a step back.
Okay.
I forgot to say, as part of this interlocal is we have four representatives as a city. It's myself, Tina, our city attorney, Eric as a council member, and Mayor Fugel. And so we are in these meetings, having these discussions, and we had the very discussion of how we're gonna split the cost and split the vote. And ultimately, at least for this issue, it was, let's just split it four ways, and everybody gets equal vote, and it's split four ways the cost.
And everybody was okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I don't remember anybody, I don't know.
It's how it should be.
From what I recall, you know, things were fine.
Scott, I will, I will speak up.
Yeah.
Our, it's been a good group, right? I think all cities have been well-represented. We've advocated very well for Pleasant Grove. We voiced our concerns on a lot of issues. I think it's been seen that we've tried to work with Senator Grover, right, and get these points across, but it's become apparent that we need some other help, right?
Well, one of the things that was suggested to us by Senator Grover was, you might want to engage in a lobbyist, because if you have individual representatives up there, so whether it's a state senator or state rep, they're gonna need some help getting support for something like that, and that's where lobbyists can come in and, and help with that.
Well, I mean, I mean, really, I mean, at the end of the day, he hasn't helped. He, he hasn't helped.
And I think that's why you're seeing overwhelmingly-
And, and so I'm in favor of this type of a thing where someone that can help drive the, the needs of, and the, the-
Well, I, I want us to be careful. Senator Grover might still be the person we're working with to get this through.
Understand.
I don't know that.
Understand. But we haven't felt, we haven't felt, and I'm, I'm okay saying this publicly, we haven't felt the support that we've needed from Senator Grover.
Yeah.
Specifically on representing the needs of Pleasant Grove.
Sure.
Hence, I think that's, yeah, that's why we're here.
Well, I think we also have an issue because I think we have a, a senator that represents some of Pleasant Grove.
Yeah.
And also represents some of-
I think all of Vineyard and part of Orem.
Yeah, but we also have a senator, what I'm getting at is we have Senator Brammer who represents some of Pleasant Grove, but also represents some of Highland-
Yeah.
And the other school district, and so we're, we're caught without really good representation-
That's right. Good.
On, on, on some of Pleasant Grove's Senate District.
Yeah.
This makes total sense to me. I, I, I was in favor of it before we, we got saddled with the new law that came through in this legislative session, and I just, I just want to reiterate that it is very important to me that we dedicate the resources necessary now so that we are not left holding a huge, huge bag of deficit and, and things that we have to cover with funding when ultimately that new school district comes online in 2027. And so I, I'm really, I, 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 I'm all for cooperation, but only as much as it benefits our students in the new school district.
And taxpayers.
And, and the taxpayers of our city, and, and every dollar that we spend that brings dollars to our new school district is well-spent, because I think the education of our students is paramount. We all know that. You have to have funding in order to have good education. And so I, I think that, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that the Lockhart Group understands, one, the urgency of the matter, and two, you know, the importance of the matter that this is to our residents.
Well, and that's what I love about having someone like this do this, because ultimately we will, we have no, we, we haven't had say. We, we won't have say.
Yeah.
This is, this is not, this is not a city issue. This is a school district issue that we were, that we were pushed into, and now we're just trying to make the very best to ensure that our residents are fairly set up for a new school district.
Well, and the good thing, right, is Stan, Stan lives in Pleasant Grove. He has a vested interest in what happens to our students, so.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean, well said, Steve. I, I think that's exactly where we're at, is we're, we're doing what we can as a city in the best interests of our residents. We feel that engaging in this will, will do that. And we, this is a PG resident, that we would engage. The seriousness and the weight of what's going on is not lost. We've done, and we interviewed, we interviewed two different firms. We did an RFP and, and got, I can't remember how many firms put in, four, I bet, four. We narrowed it down to two just off the proposals, and then we interviewed the top two.
And I think it was pretty, I don't know if I can speak to it, but pretty overwhelmingly of how the Lockhart Group approached this and wanted to approach it and advocate, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Mayor Protem, I'll make a, a motion to approve Resolution 2025-026 of the Pleasant Grove City Council authorizing the city administrator, aka Scott Derrington, to execute an agreement with the Lockhart Group.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams and a second by Councilmember Rogers. This is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call. Councilmember Lamone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, passes. I don't know, I think we just notified the other cities now, Scott, right, that we've moved forward?
The other cities have all adopted it.
Okay.
Oh, they have? We're the last one? Okay, great.
Okay. All right, Director Cardenas, looks like you're back up here. To consider the request of Shawn Johnson SJ Company for a two-lot subdivision, plat named Battle Creek Business Park, Plat B, located approximately 1879 West State Street, on approximately 5.7 acres in the Grove Zone, commercial sales subd-.
Mayor Protem, would you like to also talk about the, the next item so I can present them at the same time?
Both of them, yeah.
Sure.
You know, I'll read, I'll just read that one, too. Also, the consider request of Shawn Johnson SJ Company for a commercial site plan for a four-story hotel located at approximately 1879 West State Street in the Grove Zone, commercial sales subd- district.
Mayor Protem, Council, this is a project that is very close to my heart, and first of all, kudos to the applicant that was here through the whole city council to present a great project to us. But I remember when I started working with, with this group, and we're gonna, they're proposing right now a plat and a site plan. We're talking about a property, actually, let's go on the near map, this is a better option, it helps us. This landlocked property, or it's semi-landlocked property, that is right here, that is known as the Battle Creek Business, Business Project, and probably like some years ago, and I'm talking for like five, six years ago, they plotted the property and they created these five different lots. I don't know if some of, I think many of you guys were in the city council when that project was approved. Each lot of them had its own office building, okay? But that project didn't go through. I mean, it got approved, but it was never built. So in the initial meetings with the applicant, with the applicant that we have here in front of us today, pretty much he, he asked me the question that every community development director wants to, wants to hear. He says, what would be the best for the city to have there? And we started discussing and we started figuring out what would be the best, the best project that we could work on there, and we thought a hotel would be a good idea. Hotel gives a, a type of, it's not cell stacks, it's called-
Transit, right?
Transit, yeah, this, but it's similar to cell stacks. So it's, it's a great project, and we start working toward getting a hotel. So Dylan Hutchins is right here today with us representing that project. And what they're proposing, Mayor Protem and Council, is to number one, to consolidate all of these five different pieces of land and create a plat, a two-plat subdivision, okay? So first, let's talk about the plat subdivision. The plat is gonna be just, just like this. So we're gonna have, I'm gonna make this a little bigger, so we can take a look at it. Okay? So the plat is gonna be, this is the property line that is gonna separate both lots. This is gonna be the north lot, and we're gonna refer that as Lot 8, and then this is gonna be Lot 7, okay? Now, how does this plat has access? Let me pull this a little bit more so we can take a look at it. This plat, or these new lots, commercial lots, will have access coming from State Street, coming from right here. So going back to the aerial view, if we take a look at the CC Bank, sorry. Let me go right here, because this is the newest one. There's access from State Street right here to the west of CC Bank coming down. There's also access, this is Iceberg, so there's access right here from Iceberg coming to west as well. And eventually, as the lot number seven is developed, there's an Eastman, and there's access from North County Boulevard to go through right here. That is already established. When, when the previous project created these, these lots, that access, that Eastman, was established around that time. Again, so the item number one will be to subdivide, to create two lots, Lot 8 and Lot 7. Staff and the applicant, right now, we're working on a development agreement, because part of the conversations, and I think you guys have been aware of these conversations, but I want to reiterate, we, we're working on a development agreement where we said, if you take a, a leap of faith in, in, in bringing us a hotel or something that produce cell stacks, transit tax, sorry, transit tax-
That produces cell stacks.
Cell stacks, okay. Cell stacks and transit stacks, then we can work on, on seeing what could go to this parcel right here, this lot on the south, which is a more landlocked one. And we're working on a development agreement to apply the, the BMP zone that allows for a little bit of flex space. So we're working on that. It's not ready, probably, actually, it's coming to the city council in the, in the next, in the next, in the next meeting. However, the hotel is at completely 100% permitted use right now, okay? Now, again, what is Lot 8 is what the applicant is proposing to develop a, a hotel. And I'm gonna let the applicant, I'm gonna tell, let him take the, the microphone and tell us exactly what brand they're, they're talking about, but I'll speak of the hotels in general, in general terms right now. It's gonna be a-
Daniel, can I ask you one more question about access, just while we're on it?
Yes.
So I think we've got that Walmart's right there, is that right?
Uh huh.
And so they-
This is right here.
So there's like a little street, there was, I think we approved some sort of site plan for another building right there.
A plat.
A plat. And then there's this little street that just kind of terminates, it's heading west in, in front of the Walmart, if you look right.
Mm-hmm.
And then it just, is that going to also-
Yes.
Provide access? I just wanted to make sure they're not just gonna cut that off. Like, that's gonna actually go into the property, too, right?
If, so the main access will, I mean, from State Street, and I was asking for, I mean, not asking, I was letting you know from a busy, yeah, the street, so the-
Well, the public street, right?
Yeah, from a public street.
It's not a public street, so this is more of a-
Correct. But, so again, access number one, access number two, but there's still this road that it goes right here, and this is the plat that we approved during the last meeting. Eventually, it will be another building. If we actually take a look at the plat, this is what we're gonna see, okay? We're gonna see the three axes.
Okay, no, go ahead, yeah.
So this is the one from, coming from CC Bank. This is the one coming from Iceberg, and you guys can see this right here, that's the one that we're talking about for, for, for that road.
And then, in front of Walmart.
And then, if I remember right, the facility plan takes it also out to North County Boulevard, right?
Pardon?
Eventually.
Eventually.
Oh, yeah, no, and there's also, there's also right here, as we can see it right here, this one, this one goes through, and you can see the Eastman right here, that's already plotted. That one goes through North County Boulevard.
Okay.
But that one will be part of the hotel. That will be part of the lot, lot number seven that will eventually be developed, okay? Did I answer your questions, Council?
Yeah, I just, I just know there's a light there off that 1650 West, and then you come, and then you, I guess Walmart, that'd be kind of tough to go in front of, but that's, that's gonna be, there's also, I don't, anyway, yeah, that answered my question, thank you.
Perfect. So now we're gonna talk about Lot A, which is the lot to the north, and we can see right here, again, the access is marked right here, the one coming from CC Bank. You can see the one coming from Iceberg, or the, yeah. And here's the one that Council Rogers just mentioned. Right here, we're not, we don't have the lot on the south, because this is the one that just shows the hotel right there. And the applicant is proposing a four-story hotel, four-story hotel with 112 units, okay? The parking in, or code requires one parking stall per each unit. So in this case, we'll be requiring 112 parking stalls as well, as we count every single one of them. We already did it before. It's 124. So they're providing more than what is needed. Also, they're gonna, when they build the, or they do another development in the south, there's gonna be an excess of parking, which is always necessary for a hotel. I think it's, it's good to plan for something like this. Anyway, they, they're providing for about 1,000 square feet of landscape areas, 34 trees, and that's something that always amazes me on a site plan like this, and to be able to allocate where they're- And that's something that always amazes me on a site plan like this, and to be able to allocate right there 34 trees. And let me, this is the landscape plan, as you guys can see. Again, just to give us an idea, I'll, I'm gonna repeat myself. This is the answer from CC Bank. This is the one from, um, from Iceberg. And you guys can see how the, the, the hotel is oriented north to south, okay? There's a swimming pool right here, that's important. I always look at a swimming pool in a hotel. Uh, so we got everything, uh, that is required by the code. So it meets the, the, the requirements in regards to open space, landscape, the height. The height of the building is important, and I mentioned that, uh, it's a four-story building, because the maximum height by a permitted use is 65 feet tall, and they're going about 51 on, with four stories. But they still, there's some, some room to, to grow right there, and the planning commission can extend that height through a conditional use permit, but at this point, they're only proposing a four-story, four-story building. Uh, now here's the, uh, this is black and white, so I'm gonna skip that. But this is just to give us the, to give us an idea of the elevation of the building. But here are the pictures of the building. They're gonna use tones that are gray, black, and white. So are the type of colors they're gonna use. It's gonna be a, a modern type of building. Um, we presented this item to the, to the DRB. Uh, we work on the palette of colors, the materials. We also presented to the planning commission. They're receiving with open arms. It's a project that we've been working for quite some time. We're excited for this project. And the planning commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval for the plat and the site plan.
Let's hear from the applicant.
All right, so let's have him the, Dylan, the opportunity to tell us the brand name of the hotel as well.
I think we can kind of read it. I don't know if it's, it was a right sketch up there, but yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, my name's Dylan Hutchins, for the record. I appreciate taking the time, council, to look at our proposal for our plat and our site plan. Um, working with Daniel and staff has been great, as well as planning commission. Um, like Daniel said, this, this property was repurchased by the company that I work for. Um, it's, it's, I, I work for S.J. Company, but we represent Wolfgram Company, or Wolfgram Capital, who's the actual owner of the property. And they specialize in hospitality, so when Daniel brought up the idea for a hotel, that just popped out perfectly for us. Um, they have great ties with Marriott, and, uh, working with them, thought this would be a great place for a town place suites. Um, so we've been working with them, um, and have a LOI with them. And as far as design, we've been working with the city, and the city has some different, um, design standards that don't, haven't necessarily correlated with Marriott, but we have worked with Marriott, and they are willing to, uh, work with the city design standards, so.
How many rooms?
112.
Breakfast?
Um, it'll be like a continental breakfast.
Wonder if I need a, like, little getaway, like a staycation.
Yeah.
You, you just gotta stay, you gotta stay the night, Sid.
Continental's okay with you?
That's fine.
No, no.
I think that's what Sid was asking, can she just show up in the morning?
Executive suites?
Uh, no one's probably gonna turn you away, but that's not up to me. It's more of a Marriott question.
Love a hotel there. That's, uh, we, we've, we've actually, we've actually tried to get a hotel, um, in previous.
On state?
Previous years. Matter of fact, I think there was.
There was a bet.
There was a, there was a bet. We, we tried to get them to come, and we told them that they wouldn't, and they ended up not, didn't do it.
Oh, really?
But, uh, no money changed hands. No, no, no money changed hands, but it was kind of a, kind of a unique situation. But we are thrilled to have you here. Couldn't be, couldn't be more excited.
We're, we're very excited. The city of Pleasant Grove has been great to work with so far.
Awesome. Well, it's good to hear, Daniel.
Very good. Glad you're here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions for Daniel or the applicant?
No, I think it's awesome, no.
Not all, entertaining motion for 10B, uh, 10, sorry, 10C.
Uh, yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, we'll start with 10C. Make a motion to, to accept the request of Shawn Johnson, S.J. Company, for a two-lot sub, I guess approve the request for a two-lot subdivision plat named Battle Creek Business Park, plat B located at approximately 1879 West State Street on approximately 5.7 acres in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Rogers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes. And Daniel, do you need to add anything else to 10D?
No, Mayor Pro Tem, just again, that that's the, that's the site plan and it meets all the, the administrative requirements from the code.
Awesome.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make a motion to approve Shawn Johnson's request for a commercial site plan for a four-story hotel located approximately 1875 West State in the Grove Zone.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, and did I hear a second by Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes. Thank you. Daniel, you can relax now.
Thank you.
Uh, Scott, do we have anything else for work, for work session we need to carry over?
No, but I do want to go over schedule and things. I, I think we're good with all the department heads, right?
All right, come on up.
I'll just stay here, is that okay?
Oh, well, we kind of wanted to have you stand up here, but okay.
Uh, August 7th is gonna be summer bration. Uh, that is something that has been done for a few years now, and the person that had been doing it in the past is no longer doing it, so we have some staff that are putting that together. I can't remember. I think it starts at 5. Do you guys remember what Megan said?
Four.
In the heat.
Four to 10, thank you. So 4 o'clock to 10 o'clock, um, it will be at Downtown Park. There'll be vendors, but they'll also have some activities and, um, other things that they'll be doing in association. A, a night movie, a night movie.
You'll send out a, a typical.
So I'm gonna send you an appointment for that. Um, on August 11th is the city swim pool party, um, that starts at 6:00. And that will be just over at the pavilion by the swim pool. It's just right outside the, the fence there, so. For those that have been in the past, that's gonna be the same way that we're gonna handle that.
Will Councilmember Williams and Rogers be trying to renew their title of boat race, or not?
I don't think it'd be tough to beat them.
It, it's, it's not in the shop, it's, it's in the dumpster.
Yeah, it's in the Ace disposal shop, it's in the public services shop.
We may have to do something else, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Uh, just a reminder, from, uh, now till, uh, November, we will be with our regular schedule, first and third Tuesdays for council meeting. That will change in November since the first Tuesday in November is election day, so we won't have a meeting that, that day. But for the next, um, let's see, July, August, September, October, next four months will be first and third. Uh, that's, oh, let, let me, for next week, let me just go over a couple, or sorry, in two weeks. July 15th for our meeting. Um, we're gonna have Utopia come, they, in our work session. They want to give us an update on how things are going with their, um, as far as subscriptions and things for them. Um, and then I've also asked, um, our intern and Sierra to go to Cook Family Park and ask people a few questions. So one of them is, where are you from? Uh, one of them is, why are you coming to our park? Uh, another one is, uh, when you come to our park, do you, uh, spend any money on your way in or on your way out? Um, they have interviewed 60 people. They're hoping to have 200 done, and they're gonna present, uh, in two weeks.
Do they get special vests to get to wear for that? I mean.
Do they what?
Do they get special vests they get to wear for that? I mean, they get to walk around and show off.
Do you sound nicer than Scott when you ask those questions, or?
Trust me, they do. We got the right two people out there, right? It's not me and Dion. That probably wouldn't be who you want out there. We demand to know why you're at our park. So, uh, no, those are just a couple of things, wanted to get on your radar for, in two weeks. That's all I have.
Anything else from any staff? Now's your chance. Neil, you don't get to, sorry. Neil, do you have anything?
I, I don't have anything additional unless you guys have some questions about something.
No? All right, David, do you have anything? All right, we'll just move along then. Tina, do you have anything? All right. Okay, fine. Council, Councilman Lamone, do you have anything for us tonight? All right, I have, I know a lot of people are concerned. My roof is doing just fine. My roofers have come over, and so we're moving on. Councilmember Williams, have you anything?
I don't. Today was a, it was a rough, it was a rough night.
Good discussion, though.
Good discussion, and, and you just, I hate it when you, when we have residents against residents, but I, I really think we did the, the right thing, the best thing, the appropriate thing. That's what, that's what makes this, it was, what makes this, uh, this job difficult.
Councilmember Rogers?
Uh, yeah, I've got three things. First, and I, I should have emailed this over before the meeting, I apologize. So if you need to get it for next meeting, I'm fine with that. I just wanted an update on the roof insurance, um, for the rec center and where we're at in that process. I know we were pending some approval of some second portion of it. I, I don't know, I just was hoping to get a full, uh, update.
I can answer that question. Actually, there's nothing we can do until the roof repairs are actually completed, and then we have to send our invoices that we've paid to the insurance company, and then they will evaluate whether or not we get the full depreciation value, which was a little over 70 some thousand dollars, or whether they're gonna give us some portion of that. At that point is when I think we would have the ability to appeal if they don't give us the full portion.
How, how close are we on, oh, we've got Dion raising his hand. Oh, okay, that was my next question. So, yeah, they're in the process right now, it sounds like. Okay, cool. Um, and then I, these, I don't know, this might be for Dion or Neil, but we, we approved in the budget the capital project for the downtown lights, kind of those permanent, permanent fixtures. What's the timeline on that, and when is it, kind of what's the next steps and when that's gonna happen? Okay, yeah, I'd love to see that. I don't know. Do we have a timeline on that? I think we approved enough to do new, like, decorations for Christmas too, right? Isn't that, wasn't that in the budget?
Like, some of the banners?
Some of the banners and things like that.
I thought we did.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like an update on that. If you could maybe let us know, kind of a timeline, maybe in two weeks when we meet again.
I think what we're, what, what we're saying is we haven't really sat down and figured that one out just yet, but we'll put it, we'll bump it up. The money became available today.
Christmas in July, Neil. Yeah, hit your account, and you haven't got it spent yet.
That was 11 and a half hours ago.
Yeah, geez, I can't, it's still there. The last is actually, it is for Neil. It's the 400 North, last meeting, you talked about some delays that were caused by Xfinity's failure to move their, their cabling. I was just wondering if we've had any progress on that.
We've got a firm commitment to have them off on July 11, and then hopefully we have some sway with the next company that Rocky Mountain Power has procured to remove the poles. Uh, that's Fugel and Sons, I don't know if you've heard of them.
Yeah, I don't know.
We made a special request because Rocky Mountain Power generally won't issue the work order until they have full confirmation that they're off the poles. But they're, they're issuing the work order now, so the crews are on standby, ready to go on the 11th and 14th to remove those poles, to, to get the work done as quickly as possible.
And indications to you, you feel like they're, they're committed to Ju- July 11th, and they're likely to hit that date?
Yeah, they're out there doing the work now.
Okay. That's all I had. Mayor Pro Tem?
All right. I just wanted to say thank you to Scott and Tina and our staff. Good job prepping for tonight.
Yep. Let me say that, Tina, Neil, Daniel, have spent, uh, obviously, a ton of time on this, and I appreciate making sure that all the background was understood and what happened in the planning commission, and, uh, making sure that we had findings, um, so that, um, depending on what the outcome was, that the council was prepared.
Definitely helped.
I appreciate them for what they do.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
All right, with that, there's nothing else. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. They have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lamone. We're adjourned.